I'd like to call the meeting to order, advise everyone this meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone else in attendance recording? There being none, if you'll join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with citizen concerns, comments. There being none, we will move on to special recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Another nice recognition of an Auburn student, this one happens to be Isabella Laurie, our chairperson's daughter. I was recently notified by Mr. Owen Russell, who is employed at the Central One Credit Union, and he notified that Ms. Cannell's 8th grade class at Auburn Middle School had all submitted student essays to a contest that they were holding. And Isabella was actually selected as one of seven finalists, and this was actually from credit unions across all of Massachusetts. So she has been selected, and appropriately so, I did read her essay, it was wonderfully done. She will receive $250 and a certificate of recognition. Unfortunately, she is, well fortunately, she's been invited to the State House. Unfortunately, it's while they're in Washington DC, so she won't be able to make that. However, we have arranged for a photo opportunity, Mr. Russell will go up, Mr. Gagnon has graciously coordinated that, so that way she can get some media attention for the great job that she did. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and offer her congratulations.
We will now move on to, I'd like to introduce the chairperson of our Select Board for recognition.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm actually here on behalf of Senator Michael Moore tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Dr. Brunel. Senator Moore really wanted to be here tonight, tonight's a very important night. We are saying goodbye to two longtime school committee members, and who have offered so much to this committee. Mrs. Gribbins and Mrs. Gibbry, thank you for your 15 and seven-year commitments, not just to the town, but to every child in the town. That commitment has allowed the town not only to provide a quality curriculum, but also allowed the town to expand the brick and mortar of the schools. Your service is appreciated, it will not be forgotten, and on behalf of the Onset and Moore and the Massachusetts State Senate, I'll just read one of them, although I have one for each of you. Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate, official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Elizabeth Gribbins in recognition of your 15 years of dedicated service as an elected member of the Auburn School Committee, with appreciation for always putting kids first. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends best wishes for continued success, that the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. It's signed by Senate President Therese Murray, but proudly authored by your State Senator, Michael Moore. May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Representative Frost is on his way.
Yes.
I'll give you a PT and a thing.
Well, we're not quite done yet. On behalf of the committee, Dr. Brunel and the entire district, we want to present you with a little gift. You could pass these down to Liz and Leanne.
From my standpoint, and Doreen did speak of it, I mean Liz, from 1999 to today, even serving the children of this district with zeal and passion, and Leanne from 2007 to 2014. There's a lot of experience there in those 22 years, and I can speak on behalf of myself, whenever I had issues, you were great counsel to me. It's a huge loss to the district and to this committee, and I truly, I thank you, not just for serving the district, but for your mentorship moving forward, and you're going to be big shoes to fill, and I promise you that we are going to do our best to bring people to speed as you did with me. So please, if you'd like to open them, on behalf of all of us, to you, we thank you for your time, this board. And we get to actually snack while we watch the strategic plan presentations.
Wow, wait till they're done.
school committee.
You know what, you should just wait, this would be the day to hear you.
Yeah.
I will.
While we do Representative Frost. Paul, if you want to present, we're just cutting cake. We just did our presentation, Representative Frost is here, thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the members of the school committee. Just got off from the Mass Pike, coming back from Foss at the State House after a formal session, but when I learned that there was going to be a presentation today, I certainly wanted to come. I wanted to thank Liz and Leanne for their many dedicated years of service to the school committee, to the people of Auburn, and of course, especially to the children of Auburn, and all the educators who make our, you know, help our kids every day, and certainly all our educators who need good advocates, people who are going to work with them to try to do the best by our children. It's not an easy job, and I know it's not an easy job being on the school committee, because, you know, being on TV and constantly having to take tough positions, it's not easy. And so I appreciate it, and I appreciate both of your years, you know, both of you for your years of service, and certainly want to recognize it, congratulate you, and now you can sit on the other end of the TV and give your points of view as to what you think should be done and or not done. So congratulations to you both, thank you for your service, and I hope your successors come Tuesday can serve with great distinction in their service as you both have. So I bless you both, good luck, and I have citations for you as well, for the Massachusetts representatives, thanking you and congratulating you for your service to the Auburn School Committee. Thank you.
Wayne?
Yeah, we take it from the bottom. Wayne? I would just like to say thanks to both for the knowledge they have brought to the school system and to the school committee. I know we've had our times with each other, but we grew into a team to help the students of the town of Auburn. We have not grown as just a team as a school committee, we have with the principals and all the teachers and stuff in the town. And I just want to say one thing, is I've got a lot of knowledge from both of you, even in our hard times, I credit you people for a lot of things that I know or have learned over the years that I didn't expect when I first walked in this door. My views were different, but they have changed tremendously, and I want to thank you two for helping me to be a better person for our children, and hopefully whatever you do in the upcoming years, you just keep striving and helping out and doing what you do best. Thank you.
All right, briefly, I will just say that it's been an honor to serve with you two, and again, like Wayne said, over the past two years, I've learned quite a bit, we've had some laughs as well, you've made it a comfortable transition for me to come from the outside and sit on this board with you. Most of the time, almost all the time, we're in agreement, and that's because we share a lot of the same values and a lot of the same concerns, and it's really been great. We really haven't had any issues, not to say that it's unhealthy to have those issues or disagreements, we just haven't. And again, that made me feel very comfortable that we're all in this together, and it's been great for the children of Auburn, great for the district, and I wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors, and I can't thank you enough.
It's with mixed feelings that tonight's my last meeting. Education is extremely important, it always has been, it's done very well with my children, and I just know how important it is. It was an honor to serve, I very much enjoyed it. There were times when I wished I could just crawl under a rock and hide, but, you know, it was what I chose to do, and I stand by all my decisions, and I just think that the district has come so far in the seven years that I've been on this board, and I am proud to say that I was part of that. So I know that whoever comes into these seats is going to do just as well and continue to keep the momentum moving forward, and I just wish everybody the best, and who knows, some may be done, some may not.
I guess I would say that it's been a privilege to sit with all of you on this committee, and looking back, of all the people that were on the committee for the last 15 years, I've learned so much, and it's been such a privilege, and I've met some really wonderful people. But I do want to say that, in my opinion, without good educators, our society comes to a halt. And with that said, you have the most wonderful and most important jobs in the whole world, and so I want to thank you and tell you that it's been a privilege to be a part of what you do on a daily basis, even if it was just a small bit. So thank you.
Thank you again. That was very nice. Can move on to your report?
With your permission, I will go down, we have a presentation to share with you regarding the strategic plan, sorry.
Thank you.
This is coming on.
Maybe not.
The battery's dead.
In that?
Yeah, maybe, I can't.
Jump, jump.
Guaranteed.
Here you go.
Was it on early, or was it going to go off?
When you turn it on. Check the power on the end.
Did you say it was going to be a short one?
It's going to be a very brief meeting, yes. You do have a copy in front of you, so I can go through it that way, we just lose the ability to share it.
Sure.
It was tripped?
I can go get it, I know where to find it.
Okay.
If we have to choose between that and the AC, I think we'll stick with the AC.
No, no, no. No, no, no. Joe. I don't know.
So I'm going to get started with this overview, and want to begin by thanking all of the individuals who are in attendance tonight, and I actually will introduce them to you once we go through, once I get a little bit further in. But as indicated, you have in front of you actually three different documents, and as a planning team, and this is the smaller group here that's with us this evening, the planning team, we decided that it made sense to put our strategic plan into three different documents. The first one that you have is should be on top, and it is a one-page sheet, that really is the overview. And the thinking was, that document would be one that we would widely share, perhaps even have large banners or posters made that would hang in each of our schools, it would be a document that we could send home, much like we have with the district brochure that we've sent home on an annual basis. So that way, everyone in our school community can see what it is that we determined, not only as a planning team, but more importantly, as the team of 125 who met back in November, when we tried to answer the questions, how do we ensure that the Auburn Public Schools continues to meet our students' needs so that they can in turn meet the challenges and opportunities of a changing world? Am I on?
It's coming on.
It's coming on, okay, perfect. Perfect timing. So I'm going to highlight for you the three different documents, but then speak mainly to what we have called the Tier Two Document, which is this one here. This is the one that we thought we would certainly share and post on our website as we would all of these, but this goes into far more grainer detail than the one-page sheet itself does. We'll just give it a minute while this comes out. Oh, sure. With great suspense that we wait for this to... Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bouvier, and Mr. Fahey, and Mr. Gray, for that. So what we have to share with you, this first document here is the one-page sheet that lists the, it really is the summary sheet of the five overarching goals. If you'll notice, over here on the left, it talks about the mission and vision, and I'll go into much greater detail when we get into this. And then over on the right-hand side, these were core values that as a district we had determined several years ago as a leadership team and brought those to you, and you have endorsed them on an annual basis. But with, it was actually Sarah Cannell as part of the planning team helped to do reworking of one of the phrases, so that way it shows now that it is shared core values, which really speaks to this being a community-wide effort, not only the school community, but the greater Auburn community as well. The other document that we've created, and this one goes into, this is the one that we call the Tier Three Document, goes into tremendous detail. So the third phase there goes into the action steps, and what that document includes is not only the five overarching goals, teaching and learning, technology, community partnerships, transitions, and health, wellness, and safety. It then lists specific initiatives under each that are on the one-page sheet, and then finally, that large document has all of the action steps that we believe are necessary in order to achieve each of the initiatives within the five overarching goals. Now, a couple of points that I will share with you, the first one being, this document will never be complete. Just as when the curriculum frameworks were first created out of ed reform back in 1993, they were always expected that they would be changing documents, that they would be living and breathing documents, and it is our intention to be sure that these, this strategic plan does just that. We've committed to providing regular updates to the community, just as we did with the strategic plan that was created back in the fall of 2007, and we began working on in earnest in the fall of 2008 upon my arrival and working with the leadership team and all of you. So what I'm going to show and highlight through for you is this, what we call the Tier Two Document. This is one that stapled, it should have been in the middle of your packet. In here, as it notes, a strategic plan really provides the direction about an organization. It highlights that which is most important, so between the mission, which is strengthening connections through rigor, relevance, and relationships, and the vision, which is to educate and prepare our students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world, as well as the core values that I've noted for you previously, it really outlines for all of us, and more importantly, for the Auburn community and those who are watching, to see what it is that we value and how we're going to accomplish and breathe life into that which we value. If you remember, there was a subset of this group here this evening who actually started their meeting on October 2nd, and we met in the media center of the Auburn High School, and that was called the Design Team. And we created that day a list of individuals across the community, our goal being to have a wide cross-section that represented all groups. We had parents, we had teachers, retirees, we had members of the clergy, town, and state government, we had members, oh, excuse me, thank you, we had students who joined us, as well as members of the business and higher ed communities. From that list generated, phone calls were actually made to approximately 130 individuals, with almost 120 coming, and if you remember spending the better part of a day at Auburn High School, at Auburn High School on November 16th. We came up with future trends as well as the vision. Then we broke into this smaller group, what's called the Planning Team, and we've been working in earnest since the late winter to actually review through all of the information that was shared by those in attendance on the 16th. And this is the document that we have created. Okay? So I'll do it this way then, okay? Okay? Thank you for your patience, okay. So this is the Tier Two Document that outlines what it is that we have created. Starting with the Table of Climates, I won't walk through this piece, but I do want to highlight this section here. As I mentioned to you, this really is the way of an organization defining its strategy or its direction. All of us, many of us here were there that day, and these are photos that show of the November 16th date. The Design Team, as I indicated, we met on October 2nd, and then the World Cafe was on November 16th. This group here, I'd like to give recognition to, or what was called the Planning Team. So in attendance, we have, there is Allison Hill Shereen, Rosemary Reedy, Joyce McGregor, Sarah Cannell, Jeff Berg, Reverend Doug Gees, Amy Faber, Leanne Gibbry, Beth Chase, Beth Chamberlain, Deb Kozic, Susan Lopez, Joe Gagnon, Eileen Dunnehugh, Casey Handfield, Kathy Lozay, Eric Bouvier, Pam Kaufman, Peter Gray, Joe Fahey, and I. And as noted here and mentioned previously, it is our commitment as a planning team to be sure that regular updates are provided, because as Tom Landry has said, and I've used this quote quite often, but it really speaks to the heart of the matter. So setting a goal, that isn't the main thing. Some might say that is the easy part, but it's deciding how you're going to go about achieving it, and really staying with the plan, that's where the true work comes in. As noted here, we defined our mission and our vision, and these are phrases and terms that you have seen, and just with some minor tweaking, we actually, for the vision, which had been the mission, we changed opportunities and challenges, reversed the order of those to really highlight the positive nature of an opportunity. Here are the shared core values that we have as a group, and by a group, I mean our entire school community. Next, we defined the overarching goals. So for teaching and learning, we had, of this larger planning team, we had subcommittees. So part of that group, Dr. Lozay is going to present the initiatives for that team. Her team also consisted of Jeff Berg, Casey Handfield, Rosemary Reedy, and Joyce McGregor. Next, we will have Mr. Bouvier present regarding technology. His team members were Mrs. Beth Chase, as well as Sarah Cannell. For community partnerships, Pam Kaufman will be presenting, but also Deb Kozic, Eileen Dunnehugh, Reverend Gees, and that's it for that team there. For transitions, Mr. Gagnon, Joe Gagnon will present. Also on his team were Amy Faber, Beth Chamberlain, and Susan Lopez. And finally, for health, wellness, and safety, Mr. Fahey will be presenting, and along with him was Janice King, Leanne Gibbry, Allison Hill Shereen, and that was it. Okay. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Lozay to highlight regarding teaching and learning, the first of our overarching goals.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Brunel noted, this work that we've been working on for the last several months actually, has truly been a team effort, and I'm honored to be here tonight representing the subcommittee that worked on the teaching and learning component. Our group looked closely at what the participants at the World Cafe identified as important aspects of teaching and learning, and then from that information, we identified and defined eight major initiatives that we believe will further advance rigorous and relevant teaching and learning. The first initiative that we identified was to refine and expand our co-teaching and inclusive practices within the district, and as you know, that initiative has already begun, but we believe it's still in its infancy, and so we plan to continue to train additional partners, as well as recruit, train, and support coaches to ensure that we can sustain that initiative. The next initiative that we identified was to develop a state-of-the-art English language learner program. As our population of ELA learners continues to grow, and in order for us to truly provide equitable opportunities for all, we believe that over the next three to five years, we'll need to continue to provide staff training, we need to enhance our family outreach, and that we need to secure some increased resources around that. Our third initiative was to look at the professional development of our staff, and though we believe that we presently offer a great program of high-quality professional development throughout the district, we decided that we would like to find an avenue to actually provide some differentiated and individualized professional development to specific teachers or clusters of teachers, and those needs would be identified by the teachers along with their principals or evaluators. We would be remiss, of course, if we did not include curriculum in teaching and learning, so we thought about where we are presently in the Common Core, but then we're looking ahead to where we needed to go. So the three areas within this plan that we're going to focus on is math, science, and ELA. In terms of math, we presently need to look at our program, the everyday math program. It no longer aligns with what the frameworks are telling us we need to teach, so over the next three to five years, we will explore, investigate, and then adopt a K-5 math program, and then implement it and phase it in. We also need to look at the new science standards, which still have not been officially given to districts, but there is a draft that we can begin to look at in terms of aligning it. And finally, we will need to look at our K-5 ELA program and look to adopt a new series there as well, seeing our series is very old in the new Common Core, ask for such a rigorous, deep text, and they also are looking to have more nonfiction as opposed to fiction within that curriculum. And our seventh initiative, we seem to have more than any one, is to create and/or implement valid and authentic assessments. We've come before you before and spoke about the new PARC test, which may replace MCAS, and if that is the case, we want to ensure that our staff, as well as our students, are ready to take that test and perform well. We talk a lot about the educator vow system, and within there, we need to identify district-determined measures. We want to ensure that those are valid and reliable for our educators, so that when we use those in terms of whether they have a low impact on student learning, a moderate or a high, that we... of teachers, and those needs would be identified by the teachers along with their principals or evaluators. We would be remiss, of course, if we did not include curriculum in teaching and learning, so we thought about where we are presently in the Common Core, but then we're looking ahead to where we needed to go. So the three areas within this plan that we're going to focus on is math, science, and ELA. In terms of math, we presently need to look at our program, the everyday math program. It no longer aligns with what the frameworks are telling us we need to teach, so over the next three to five years, we will explore, investigate, and then adopt a K to V math program, and then implement it and phase it in. We also need to look at the new science standards, which still have not been officially given to districts, but there is a draft that we can begin to look at in terms of aligning it. And finally, we will need to look at our K to V ELA program and look to adopt a new series there as well, seeing our series is very old in the new Common Core, ask for such a rigorous, deep text, and they also are looking to have more nonfiction as opposed to fiction within that curriculum. And our seventh initiative, we seem to have more than any one, is to create and/or implement valid and authentic assessments. We've come before you before and spoke about the new PARC test, which may replace MCAS, and if that is the case, we want to ensure that our staff, as well as our students, are ready to take that test and perform well. We talk a lot about the educator vow system, and within there, we need to identify district-determined measures. We want to ensure that those are valid and reliable for our educators, so that when we use those, in terms of whether they have a low impact on student learning, a moderate or a high, that we're using valid and reliable measures. And finally, we want to examine what we presently use throughout the district, K to twelve for universal screening of our students, and whether we can provide interventions in all of the areas. So there may be some gaps that we identify, and then we would need to examine and adopt some new tools to assess those. And finally, and certainly not least in importance, is we want to really look at our pre-K program and hopefully find models or options out there that would allow us to increase access to that program for our students and for longer amounts of time. Research tells us that the earlier we get our students and the longer we actually have them in our schools, the more successful they are. So those are our eight initiatives, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bouvier to talk about the technology portion of the plan. Thank you.
Actually, please. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Good evening, I'm Pam Kaufman, the Intern Director of Public Services, and since I'm sort of the newest kid in the block, so to speak, in public schools, I want to thank the school committee for its support in terms of this initiative, the strategic planning, and I do have to comment that, I think, I'd only been in the district for two days, and then I came to the World Cafe and was incredibly impressed with the participation, the breadth and the depth of perspectives and ages and backgrounds and history of the town. So, in a way, it was really almost fortuitous that I worked on this particular committee and with my partners. Overall, the relationships within Auburn community and the school department are very strong, and the purpose of this aspect, this particular goal, is to strengthen existing partnerships and to create new collaborative partnerships as well, and to look to how we can advance intergenerational connections. So look within the community in terms of what organizations are out there, to tap into the experiences of the senior centers, the churches, and other dedicated groups that are so important. A lot of connections have already been made in the schools in terms of all the people coming to the schools and speaking, and to develop a database that would be available for all in the school district in terms of that resource, that very rich resource that we have within the community. The second aspect is to identify resources within the community for potential partnerships. So that would include, obviously, Social Services Agency, in addition to the existing relationship, very positive one, with Auburn Youth and Family Services, but with school, other school and town officials, colleges, et cetera, and that cuts across the board, but also to end up with a resource compilation that, again, would be available for staff in our schools to tap into and to strengthen as well. To expand, promote, and encourage volunteerism beyond school community and beyond, between school community and beyond, and that already is in place, again, that we want to look at ways in which we can expand the use of volunteers in our schools, and how we can cut across not only disciplines, but cut across the community generations and other agencies and organizations as well. Lastly, is to evaluate the effectiveness of existing communication tools. And like any district, I think Leann, you had commented how much the, how far the district has come in even seven years, and I'm thinking of Elizabeth in terms of your fifteen years, and as Dr. Brunel said, this is a living document, the strategic plan, and there are many tools already in place that we use to communicate with each other, among each other, and to the community at large. And particularly with the technology tools that are available to us today, we want to look at how we can expand that as well in the ever-changing world. Any questions? Thank you.
I'm Eric Bouvier, everyone knows me, I'm the Director of Technology. I think everyone that was at the World Cafe that Saturday came away feeling that technology was an important piece of what, of all, of many of the conversations that were happening in that building, and I think it took a couple of different tacks. People really were excited for new technologies and to bring new technologies into the school, but also they weren't ready to become a fully technological entity that gave up some of the human aspects of education and what goes on in a classroom, and I think we've been really working hard to make a balance between that. And for us, that has, we've looked at that as a challenge to personalize education through the use of technology, and we're doing that through the one-to-one program. Personalization and the ability to give students the opportunity to collaborate and communicate amongst one another does continue that human element in that traditional classroom environment while bringing in all the benefits that technology and the iPads can bring to a classroom. So clearly, the one-to-one student iPad program is one of our largest initiatives we've undertaken in a long time, and we are very excited about it, so it headlines our strategic plan for technology. We are, I stood up here and talked about it a few times now, so nothing I'm saying is new, but we are not stopping at the eighth and ninth grade next year. We are fully anticipating on expanding this project, perhaps all the way down to the elementary schools at some point, so we are, we're looking at that as a real key to our future, and we're excited that it's in the strategic plan. Providing ongoing technical support, again, this is something that, obviously, we've provided technical support before, but times are changing, and so is technical support. It's becoming a more personalized structure, less classroom-based, everybody's got to know this, and more just-in-time, what do you need to know and how, you know, when do you need to know it? And providing technical support in a variety of fashions that isn't always face-to-face now, and can we utilize more online and more flexible environments to provide the technical support exactly when it's necessary, and not sometime in September, and maybe, you know, hopefully they'll get to use it in September. We want it there when they need it, whenever they need it, and all the time. So we're changing the way that technical support happens, and the same with professional development. We want professional development to be more personalized. When do you need to know it? Let's get you that information when it's really valuable to you. And professional development is moving towards a direction where it doesn't have to happen during the school day, it could happen at night, it could happen on the weekends through online fashion as well. So personalization, providing mobile devices to everybody, is really changing the way that we do professional development and technical support. The next item on our list is online learning. This is something that we've been doing for a little bit in a very small setting through virtual high school, at both the high school and the middle school, but online learning is taking off across the world, and especially in Massachusetts, where we are now, we now have certified virtual schools, and our students have the opportunity to attend schools virtually full-time. So Auburn is looking at how we can begin to incorporate many of those principles into what we do in our classrooms and in our schools, so that we can continue to evolve with the times and provide either blended classrooms or perhaps more opportunities for all of our students to partake in an online course. There is a very strong possibility that our students are going to go to college, perhaps taking the entirety of their program online, or portions of it online, and that's a skill we feel we have to prepare them for. So being able to expand our ability to do online learning, assess it, and find proper areas for it to fit into our curriculum is important to our future. And our final area there, maintain and provide quality data and appropriate personnel, to appropriate personnel agencies. Data has become so important to everything that we do now. It drives our decisions, but it also affects the amount of money that we receive from the state. We have to have all of our data accounted for, all of it has to be clean and accurate, and it has to be reported in a timely and efficient manner. And that data then spreads out to a whole host of other systems, whether it's the calling system, or the library system, or the nursing system, and if you make a mistake the first time, you've made a mistake that carries you through a bunch of times. So we are always working to make our data cleaner and better, and we are moving towards a new system, which we feel will help us manage that data better, and also recent connections with the Department of Education are going to be transitioning that data up to them on a more routine and almost nightly level, so it's very important that the data that we're keeping is of quality and that it maintains that throughout the entirety of the process and all transmissions that happen. So we take it very seriously, and we're working very hard, so. But as I go through this, I really think the theme of what we're doing is mobility and personalization, and that's the direction that Auburn is going, and making our students more mobile, the technology more mobile, so that the students and our teachers have the ability to learn, receive support whenever, wherever they happen to need it, and that's our plan.
Good evening, I've come here tonight to represent our team. Ms. Williams-Lopez are here, who helped put this together. We're going to talk about some transitions that are going to be both short-term and long-term goals on our other sheets. The Freshman Academy will be one of them at Auburn High School, where they're going to conduct a hybrid one-to-one initiative, both utilizing textbooks and one-to-one technology, that their eighth-grade students currently at the middle school have already had that initiation through the pilot program, so moving up to the Freshman Academy should be a smooth transition. They are going to have a group of teachers that are going to be solely dedicated to first-year students, thereby providing an incubator that's going to ensure their success as they move forward through the high school. Very interesting initiative, and I think it's going to be very successful. The College and Career Readiness is an ongoing program that we're going to expand upon, and to look to further develop those relationships with the Chamber of Commerce, so that our juniors and seniors can go out on real-life internships within that community. We're also going to be looking to, again, form and better form those relationships with the local colleges. We live in Massachusetts, in an area where there are so many colleges local to us within Stone Throw, so to get those relationships, so our students can then take and look at colleges and careers, where they're going and plan those out, entrance inventories. Naviance has been around for a while, but we're going to move upon that with that relationship. School-building transitions, the most exciting bullet for me here and for all of us, and I hope to informally invite all of you to come, we have our first tours, and both you ladies come back, and we do that ribbon-cutting to walk through, because it's been a lot of hard work on all your parts to lay that foundation. So that's the beginning, and this is all going to happen amazingly, and it will, in the summer of 2015. Auburn Middle School will open on West Street, our students will transition into that physical building with their teachers, and that'll have the renovated current Auburn Middle School become a intermediate school for three to five on our school at Swanson Road. We're also going to have one of our K to twos that move into Packer Chalk, and they're allowing us to take a hundred-year-old school offline. This is a win-win for the entire district and the community and all your hard work that went into this. I truly appreciate us being witness to that. We're also talking about student transitions here, so some traditions that we've already started to then go ahead and then bring those to the next level, from every grade level to every school. And the eighth to ninth grade transition with the Freshman Academy is going to be a nice transition, and then our schools, within our schools, from sixth to seventh, seventh to eighth, and then from those important transitions, when you go from that first step from the K to two, which are very small schools relative to now, it'll be a much larger school for the three to five, and then from that three to five up to the middle school, all those transitions we've put in place for public forums and nightly meetings and having the students come up, we're going to take and take those to the next level.
Hi. Thank you, everybody. Again, I'd like to personally thank my team. We had a lot of fun putting this whole thing together. Our first bullet is access safety procedures at all the buildings. We've been ongoing this thing for years. We formed a committee probably five years ago. There's constant need and improvement, like anything else, we want to stay on top of things. The next thing we have, complete reconfiguration of student transportation. As Mr. Gagnon just mentioned, we talked about the middle school coming online, the merge that's going to happen to the elementaries, it's going to take an awful lot of work regarding the student transportation, because safety is key. Next, sustained improvements initiative to promote emotional safety and security. Again, that's something that, you know, constantly needs improvement, and we feel it's a very important piece to put in here, we don't want to lose track of it. That's why we have it as a key bullet. Next we have is the review and refine the district's, district-wide health and wellness and safety policy. We hired a new Food Service Director, Janice King. She is spearheading this program. We feel very confident that, again, these initiatives that are going to be put in place, our students will certainly benefit from it. Our next bullet would be enhanced nutrition, health, physical education programs, and physical activities throughout the districts. Again, it's a live and breathing document that constantly needs work, and we feel it's key to put that there. And that's all. Thank you.
So in conclusion, I want to thank everybody who was involved in this, and I have the individuals who continue to come to me who were part of this process in various stages along the way, and describe how positive an impact the November sixteenth day in particular had, and I really think that that's something that we need to celebrate. The fact that we had people from across every group within Auburn come together to determine what it was we needed to do to ensure the continued success of the Auburn Public Schools is something unique, and as I said, to be celebrated. To me, we can consider ourselves a success when we leave either another person or perhaps an organization better when we leave it than when we found it. And certainly, Mrs. Gribbins and Mrs. Gibbry, you should take great pride for your fifteen and seven years having done that, and I think it's very fitting that one of your last votes as a school committee member will hopefully be to endorse this, which really sets us on our path. As indicated by the different point people who are here this evening to present the overarching goals and initiatives, we're really building on a very strong foundation that has been set, as a result of the work of the people in the room, including all of you, but the many, many who have come before us and retired. It's always about building on success. So I thank you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I'm entering a motion, and I'm hoping for discussion after a second.
I'll make the motion to accept the strategic plan as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions?
I do.
Yes.
Sorry. I don't really have any questions. I, first of all, the presentation was fantastic, and thank you to everybody for being here, especially community members, because you probably weren't told you had to be here, right? So you're here. But no, seriously, really, thank you so much for everybody being here and what you've done. I do have to say that this was, that the World Cafe Day was exactly what they said. It was a broad spectrum of people in the community, and a lot was heard, and a lot was taken back and considered, and from what I saw that day, this totally represents what came out of that. I, you know, there's some freedom for this being my last meeting, because I can pretty much say whatever I want, but so. So with that said, I'm going to ask everyone on this committee to take a very hard look at this, and remember that as we move forward, or you move forward, that this is going to drive everything that you do. It will drive the salaries, it will drive your budgets, it will drive everything that you do. Every vote you take needs to be driven off of the strategic plan. So it needs to be taken very seriously, and I'm not suggesting that you're not, but keep that in mind, and there's a lot of initiatives here and things that need to be done. I was really happy to see that the whole balance between technology and personalization I was really happy to see that the whole balance between technology and personalization. I heard a study the other day that said students that go to college and connect with a professor succeed in life better than those that don't. And I would have to believe that that is also true for students that connect at a grade, at grades K through 12 with a teacher. That's going to provide, that's going to mean that we need to have, we need to attract and retain our very best teachers. And what that means, we all know what that means, right? We have to, we have to make sure that we pay them a fair salary. We have to have the resources for everybody to do their job, and that means money and a budget, and that means fighting to have that. So I would leave you with that thought, that we need to do what needs to happen, and, and I think this is a great strategic plan, and I absolutely will vote for it and hope that everything comes to fruition in a very easy and wonderful way.
I would, I would just like to say that I was so enthusiastic to be part of this team. It was great, the energy in the room and just all the brainstorming that took place and the participation, and how excited that everybody that was in that room was really a stakeholder, and, and everybody was there really, really for, for the district and for the, and for the children. And I just, it was just a fabulous experience, and I'm really glad that I was part of this. And unfortunately, I didn't make the original World Cafe, but I did make all the meetings after that. And I, you know, this, this one page, I am like, I love it. I just love that we decided to go with this one pager because this really talks to exactly where we want to go and what we want to do. So I just want to wish everybody the best of luck, and I, yeah, I am so for this. I'm just really, really pleased at the way it came out.
I would say, great, great presentation, great plan. It, it's one thing to say, we're going to do this, this is how we're going to improve our schools, this is how we're going to improve our entire system, but what you guys have done is you've put it in writing, and now we're going to have to hold you to it, which, you know, obviously, when you signed on, that, that was your goal. But no, you, 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 you put the pen on the paper, and I look forward to the updates. I look forward to the progress. And just to follow up on, on what Liz said, if you find that in order to make this plan come to fruition, you need to come back to us and say, well, this is what we need and there's just no way around it. Please, come back, let us know. And, and as Liz said, we will fight for that funding because I believe this is a strong plan, and I'm on board 100 percent. Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you. You did a great presentation, as always, and like I said before, this school system has gelled so much over the years that it's just amazing to me. And to, like you say, on their vision, this is a vision of our students that you people put in your hands, and you work together to build, and you continue to build and build and build and work with each other tremendously great. I don't know any other school district, in my opinion, and I don't know them all, but that has gelled so well and connected so well between everybody, you know? And I just want to thank all of you.
I agree with my fellow committee members, and I'll say participating at, at the cafe itself, it was so professionally run, so many wonderful comments for it. So I think, Dr. Brunel, you did a great job as well, the team and all the volunteers in the community, and thank you. And with that, I would entertain a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Do you want to dismiss?
Well, I'm sure they want to go see the Bruins, so.
Oh, it was funny. The last week we were talking, I went home that night, my rotations. They sent, they sent me one. They sent me one, so that was funny. Yeah, I didn't get it. It showed up in the mail that day, so.
No, no, no. We're good.
So we, you're going to have to move on to the custodians contracts.
Yes. So we have for you this evening, we've provided updates for you. We've recently settled two contracts, and they are ratified. Mr. Page led the negotiations for the custodians, and Mrs. Gibbry for the instructional assistance. So it is my recommendation that you vote to approve these this evening, and in so doing, you can sign them, and they will become official.
I entertain a motion to approve the custodians, and can we take them both?
You can, unless they're.
Instructional assistance contracts.
Do we take them separately or together? Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, you can, we can bundle them.
Are we looking for a motion first? I apologize.
Yes.
No, I was just looking to speak on custodian.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the custodians and instructional assistance contracts as presented.
Second.
Second.
I would just like to say, the ones that really spearheaded this was Superintendent Mary Allen and Joe Fahey. They're the ones that really did the hard part of this, you know, and we worked together, but they really put themselves forward and helped.
And I would just like to make a comment on the instructional assistance. Dr. Brunel absolutely spearheaded a lot of this for me, which I appreciate, but I do want to make a comment about the instructional assistance, that they were very, very willing to, to negotiate and, you know, come to a mutual understanding. We didn't really have any disagreements, I mean, a couple little things, but nothing pertinent. And I just want them to know that, you know, we value them, as we value everybody in the district, and I just appreciate their willingness to negotiate and, and put together another contract for the next three years, so. Yeah.
I would, I'd like to follow up on what LeAnn said, and I'd like to thank my, my fellow members for being a part of these negotiations. I know it's not easy, and it's, it consumes a lot of time, and it's just not easy looking at someone and, and asking them what, to take a cut or to take this much when they feel they're worth, worth a little bit more. So I thank you for your time, and I also thank the two units, the IAs and the custodians, for in good faith coming to the table and bargaining and getting this squared away. Thanks.
So with that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. So.
You can, you can actually start signing them now, and if you remember.
Yeah, one of us has got to initial each page.
And I do have a pen if anyone needs one.
Liz and LeAnn. Yeah, Liz and LeAnn needs to do.
I'll be initialing.
Because this is their last meeting, and one of them go out with a bang.
What happens if we don't?
Well, then we'll have to tell them you wouldn't, you wouldn't do it.
These are just the contracts themselves?
Yes, you actually need to sign those two on the back pages, that's the custodians. While those are being signed, I do want to remind everyone that bus applications for next school year are due June 1st. We did receive in an extra 50 applications since we met just last week. So we received in a total of 478, but they are due on June 1st, and last year we had received over 1,100 this time. So we still got quite a long way to go. So we will be sending out another reminder to our families, but encourage them, our goal is no late charges. I'm still hopeful. If I may just share one additional item. Tomorrow, in a collaboration with Julie Jacobson and members of the Town Department, there's going to be a Civil War reenactment that will take place at Hillside Cemetery at 12:30. And Ken Ether was instrumental in coordinating this, as were a number of other individuals. So the seventh grade students will be participating and going to see that reenactment tomorrow, as will I. The band from the middle school will be playing a couple of songs, so I open the invitation to all of you if anyone is interested in stopping by at 12:30 tomorrow. It promises to be a great historical significance, but I think really a very moving ceremony that will take place.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quickly, you have a set of transfers in front of you. The first one is for informational purposes only. These are transfers within various accounts. At this time of year, we start to consolidate little pockets of money, so we know exactly what we have, and then we can do district-wide purchasing. So this is a reflection of that first analysis, that we've moved monies and redistributed into, as I said, two accounts so that we have a better handle on what remains in those particular accounts. As I said, that's for informational purposes. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Seeing none, I did pass out a updated version of the ones requiring your approval. We had some last-minute needs for the funds that we thought we were going to be able to, to transfer, and so those have been removed. And what you have before you once again is across series accounts that are taking small pockets of money and putting them into a district-wide account so that we're able to track that as we move to the end of the year.
I entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve the transfers as requested by the business manager.
A second.
It's a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
The next is the annual request to provide me with the ability to make omnibus approvals for budget transfers. As we move quickly towards the end of the fiscal year, I'm asking the school committee's permission to make those transfers with, of course, meeting with the superintendent and her being in agreement with me as we move forward to try to get the books ready for the June 30 closing.
I entertain a motion. Make a motion to grant the request for omnibus approval for the remaining FY14 budget transfers for the period May 14 to June 30.
I'll second for discussion.
Do we have a second for discussion?
I, I have always approved these in the past. I, I don't falter anybody, I don't have any suspicions or anything, but where, I'm not going to be here after tonight, I am hesitant to approve this, so I'm, for that reason, I will not, I'm not going to approve this. My vote will be no, just because I'm not going to be here.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So four.
Three. I, I feel the same way.
Three or two. Motion carries. So we do have to go into executive session?
Yes, as noted on the agenda.
I would entertain a motion and then a roll call vote.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session per MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 to discuss strategy for three-guaranteed negotiations with non-union personnel.
Second.
Mrs. Grubbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Gibbry?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Lorrie?
Yes. Thank you, LeAnn and Liz. Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.